Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The city of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the city council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plan, design, review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final actions at the third council meeting of this month or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a zoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use, amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall on our televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on channel 16. It will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Good evening. The first order of business this evening is the review and approval of the consent agenda. Item one is the approval of the February 1st, 2012 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two would be approval of the Platts. Item three is a rezon from Roosevelt Park Plan Development District in the RD and RS2 Residential Districts to the RC Recreation Conservation District in the RS2 and RD Residential Districts for allowed uses at east side of Ellis Road between 26th and 41st Street. Next, item four is a rezon from RA2 Residential District in the C2 General Commercial District to Subarea B of the Giggleby's Redevelopment Planned Development District for allowed uses at 501 to 519 South Minnesota Avenue. Item five is a rezon from RS2 Residential District in the RC Recreation Conservation District to the RS2 Residential District in the RC Recreation Conservation District for minor boundary adjustments at Southwestern Avenue and County Road 106. Item six is a conditional use permit in the RS1 Residential District to allow daycare center after-school and summer program at 4800 South Tomar Road. Item seven is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow development of a site greater than one acre in size at 1400 North Cliff Avenue. Item eight is a conditional use permit in the O Office District to build a four-unit residential building with residential units located on the first floor at East 53rd Street and South Banyan Drive, Banyan Avenue, excuse me. Item nine is a final development plan in the Subarea A of Giggleby's Redevelopment Planned Development District to construct an apartment building at the southeast corner of South Spring Avenue and West 13th Street. Item 10 is a minor amendment in Subarea D of Meadows on the River Plan Development District to allow expansion of a full-service restaurant at 2600 South Louise Avenue. And item 11 is a final development plan in Subarea D, Westwood Valley Plan Development District to allow construction of office and personal storage units at 2201 South Ellis Is there any objection to the items? David?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is David Loveland, and I'll be representing several items tonight. I did want to make note that we received several phone calls and emails today from residents concerned that wanted to state some concerns with item number six. And so, if the commission wanted to move that to the regular agenda, that would be okay.
Okay. Are there any objections to the consent agenda on the part of the commission? Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like an item from the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda other than item six? Okay. Seeing none, commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, moving item six to the regular agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda has been approved. I'd like to next approve the regular agenda with item six added. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the regular agenda, adding item number six from the consent agenda and moving item number 19 in front of item 16.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend and approve the regular agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. The regular agenda is approved. Staff report item number six.
Evening. As I stated, my name is Dave Loveland, and I'll be representing planning staff on this item and additional items this evening. Item number six is petition number 2012-0205, a conditional use permit for Lutheran Social Services at the First Reform Church at 4800 South Tomar Road. The application is for a conditional use permit in the RS1 Residential District to allow a daycare center and after-school summer recreation program. The applicant is requesting approval in order to establish that for this year. The area in size is approximately five acres, is located in residential area with the underlying zoning being RS1. Abutting zoning and land uses. To the north, south, and west is the RS1 Residential District with single-family residential, and to the east is the RD Residential District with two-family residential units. Those compatibility ratings have been assigned to four, indicating minor conflicts have potential. Under the conditional use permit standard for daycare centers, planning staff looks at, looks to see if a safe, healthy environment for the person is of primary importance. Applicants should remit their authorization from the Health Department. And daycare centers and family daycare shall be located in areas where adequate and safe playground with sufficient green areas can be provided, where safe access to the use is available, and in areas where such uses will be convenient for their clients. The access to this site is located off of 57th Street and from Tomar Road. 57th Street is considered a limited access arterial, and there are no parks, other open spaces, or schools within 600 feet. The parking at 128 spaces have been provided, 95 are required. From public agencies and infrastructure comments, the portion of the building expansion for the proposed daycare must have sprinklers. From traffic engineering, access location on to 57th should be worked out with the city engineering. Any additions or changes should be approved. Planning analysis, the applicant is proposing a building expansion to accommodate the after-school and summer recreation program. The conditional use standard noted above requires safe drop-off and pickup, green areas for players, and certification and licensing from the city Health Department. Those requirements are or will be met by this application. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent to the work proposed, and requires a complete plan check by Building Services, prior to obtaining a building permit, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with one condition, that being that the applicant is to obtain approved registration from the city Health Department prior to occupying the center. As I noted, we received several phone calls from neighbors this evening, and I'm sure that they're in attendance to speak to their concerns. So that concludes staff report.
Okay. David, just a second. I forgot to mention that if you were here for an item on the consent agenda, you're certainly free to leave. We'd love to have you stick around, but if it was on the consent agenda, you're certainly welcome to take off. Okay. Questions for David? Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here tonight? Would you come forward, please?
Hi, I'm Heather Dewitt with the Director of Childcare and Education for Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota. And there is not in fact going to be any building taking place. The proposed after-school and summer program is an existing space that has already been completed.
Anything else?
Yeah, I can tell you a little about the program. It will be an after-school and summer program only. It won't be an actual childcare center. Will serve up to 60 kids. We have been working with childcare licensing to get a license for after-school and summer programming to serve kids kindergarten through fifth grade only. And they are in the process of approving that. We need to finish this as well. Are there questions I can answer?
Mr. Chair.
Danny?
What times of the day do you anticipate the children will be there, and for how long?
During the school year, the kids will be there from about 2:50 when we get them from their schools and drive them to the program. And they'll leave by about, by 6 o'clock when we close. During the summertime, we'll open at 7:00 AM and close by 6:00 PM. So the students could potentially be there any time between 7:00 and 6:00.
6:00 PM then is the latest?
Yes. Yep, we close at 6:00.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Heather? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address item number six? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Martin Hagie. I live at 804 East Dove Trail. My property is adjacent to the church property on the south side. The proposed playground associated with this project would be adjacent to my property line. My wife and I have lived at this property for over 22 years. We've had a good relationship with the church. One of the reasons we bought this property was because we had a church in the backyard, and we thought a church would be a good neighbor. We bought this property intending to be next to a church, not a school, not a daycare, not an after-school program, not a summer program. Over the years, 22 years that we've lived there, we've had some minor issues with Wednesday night youth events and so forth, and vacation Bible school, but we understand that this goes along with normal church activities. And we've been able to overlook that and make adjustments by closing our windows and so forth. What's being proposed would be an everyday situation. And both my wife and I are retired. We like sitting on our deck. We like working in the yard, and we do not want to be next to a playground where there's a lot of commotion and screaming and yelling children, to be very honest with you. It would be disruptive to our lifestyle. Our deck is right next to the property line. Our living quarters are off it, our bedrooms off it, and so forth, and we're asking you not to approve this permit. Questions?
Any questions for Martin? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address this item? Please come forward.
My name is Sue. I live at 814 Dove Trail. And my property, my yard, is adjacent to the school's property also, not right next to the proposed playground. But I too, I feel exactly the same way that Martin does. He's not my husband. I'm a different person. But my concern is the noise. I'm a retired school teacher, taught second grade for years, so I know how loud and boisterous kids can get. I love to work in my yard. I'm outside all the time, and I love our, the peace and quiet of our neighborhood has been just wonderful. And I've been in my house for 25 years or more, so this really, it really does disturb me thinking that from 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, we could have a lot of noise in the neighborhood. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Sue?
Sue, the role of the Planning Commission, just to clarify for you, is land use. Is this a proper land use and does it fit the existing zoning? And so, to have people common opposed in opposition to a daycare isn't surprising to us, but you'll find them, after-school programs, daycares, throughout the city. Because they do fit in a residential neighborhood, because they have access to, close access to schools, and proximity to children and to parents. So that's what we rule on here, and just as a point of clarification. So does it make sense from a land use perspective?
Well, as a land owner, in my own, you know, being right there and having been there longer than the church has been, to me, it's an invasion of my privacy. And, you know, I can see a daycare if the kids are kept inside, but that, I know that won't happen. And so, I'm just saying, you know, if I, I had to come, normally I wouldn't do something like this, but I feel strongly enough about it to do this. So, you know, that's, I don't know if any of you would like to have a daycare with 60 children in your backyard that you're listening to from 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night either, so.
Any other questions for Sue? Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Dave Noonheisen. I'm a member at First Reform Church, and I accompanied Heather Dewitt tonight, and I'll also be here for another item on the agenda. I just wanted to address the issue of the church and the program itself. This is intended to be a program that is an outreach to the neighborhood. It would be a program where we would reach out to the neighborhood in a way for them to have a place for kids, a safe place for kids to come after school. And I think that's really the intent of it. It's a mission intention for the, for the church. We certainly have targeted just the neighborhood children in the mailings that are going out. We want it to be a place that's inviting for the kids to come, a place that they feel safe, and they can have after-school care immediately right in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to address that. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Any questions for Dave? I guess not. Thanks, Dave. Is there anybody else that would like to address this item with new or different concerns? Okay. Seeing none. Is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item number six with the one stipulation that the applicant attain approved registration from the city Health Department prior to opening.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Maybe just a reiteration of what I've said before, is that churches and schools, though they have an opportunity to have a lot of traffic at specific times, they, they serve a purpose within our residential neighborhoods, and we have them all over the city of Sioux Falls. I know that it can change a potential lifestyle than what people are used to, but change is the only thing that we know is consistent in our community. And so, it fits the land use. I can see that it would be an inconvenience for people and that there's some emotion behind that, but on a land use perspective, I, I support the change.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval for item number six, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number six is approved. All right. We go to the regular agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, my name's Steve Randall. I'll be presenting this report on behalf of the Planning Department this evening and other items. Item 12 is a, is called Billion Motors Parking Expansion. It's a rezoning application to take the subject property out of a planned development district and put it into a conventional zoning district to reflect the current uses, which is a typical practice that the Planning Commission has done in the past. When a planned development district does build out, then they, the city or the applicant will rezon to what the use is. However, in this case, the purpose for the rezoning is to allow expansion of a parking lot for display and sales for the auto dealership into an area where previously it would not be allowed in the planned development district. That district is Riverrun PD, and to the north, we have compatible uses, commercial in the C2 District. To the south, that area is still in the Riverrun PD, and it's a multifamily residential district, and we've given it a compatibility rating of three, which requires that the proposed use may have potential conflicts with existing uses, which can be remedied or minimized through project design. Traffic, parking, and other external effects could be directed away from the lower intensity use. Landscaping, buffering, and screening should be employed. Now, over the years, development in this project has met the requirements of the Subarea Regulations in the planned development district. By rezoning to C2 General Commercial, those Subarea Regulations would no longer apply. The applicant has given us a site plan indicating a two-phase development of expansion of parking for the auto dealership. Accessibility is provided on West 12th and access points from South Lyons', and the subject property is adjacent to the Sioux River Greenway Design Review District. The property is fully developed with capital improvements except for those areas required for the expansion. The rezoning is to establish an existing use in the conventional district. The potential conflicts deal mainly with the residential area to the south, and the fact that the preservation aspect of the greenway, trees, and so on setbacks would no longer apply. Staff notes that in the future, then, C2 General Commercial Regulations for setbacks, parking, all other requirements, signage, and so on would come into effect. At this time, the applicant has not indicated any other type of development than the expansion of the parking lots, and I believe they can address that for you this evening. The submitted plan is complete for your consideration, and because the subject application is compatible and there is precedent for taking developed sites out of planned development districts, staff is recommending approval. Now, we've had a couple calls, one from the property owner to the south, the multifamily apartment project, and also the restaurant to the west. Neither of which voiced opposition to the project, but did want to know more about it, and perhaps they're here this evening. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Steve, I have a question. Is this work begun?
We have heard that it has started. The contractor is here this evening and perhaps can address that.
Okay. I was curious, because I drove by there. I drive by there every day and noticed that all those trees towards the River Greenway have disappeared already.
Under the planned development district, those trees were to be preserved under a final development plan that was approved?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay. Thank you, Steve. David, are you the petitioner? Would you come up, please?
Good evening again. Dave Noonheisen for Feiging Construction. I'm here representing Billion Toyota, and I have Kirk Davis with me here, the general manager of the Toyota store. I'll address the phasing of the project just a little bit. Last fall, Billion came to us and asked us to develop additional parking or plans for additional parking. And in that process, we realized that the zoning, because the first phase of the project was in Subarea A, which is the expansion on the east side of their existing facility, Subarea A was allowed to go through a normal plan review process, and that happened last fall. And comments on the trees and that kind of thing were taken care of in that plan review process at that time. So we proceeded with construction of Phase 1 last fall as, as part of the normal plan review process. But in the plan review process, zoning requested that we either have to submit for rezoning, which was their preference, or go through a major amendment on the, on the planned development. Because the, the area on the south side, which is the expansion that is left undone, is in Subarea B, which does not allow for expansion of the parking lot in Subarea B. So that's the reason we're here tonight. At the request of zoning, the zoning office, they, they recommended that we take all of the entire property out of the planned development district and move it into a C2 conventional zoning. So that's, that's the reason.
Any questions for David?
So who did the plan, plan review? Was it through the city or?
It was through the city.
In the city it did approve, taking the trees out already and everything?
They did.
Okay.
Any other questions for David? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number 12? Seeing none. Is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number 12 is approved.
Item 13 is also a rezoning petition. The petitioner is represented by Nate Fulmuth, a Vera McKenon Hospital architect, and the owner is Garrett Peters of Vera McKenon Hospital. The request is for an expansion of the hospital campus to allow community garden and future uses related to a Vera McKenon Hospital. It's a, it's about a half-acre site. It was previously zoned O Office District. A number of residential structures there were removed to allow for development of office uses. Since then, it has also been used as a hospital employee garden site. And as a major institution, the hospital is seeking ways to cooperate in community ventures, one of which- the hospital is seeking ways to cooperate in community ventures, one of which is community gardening. And so until the site does become more feasible for development in the future, the hospital is asking that it be included in their campus with subarea regulations that would restrict the uses to those indicated in your staff report. The uses permitted would be residential, office, medical clinic, family daycare and daycare center, commercial parking lot, hospital and community garden shelters specifically. The applicant is proposing to expand the campus to include the subject property for future hospital-related uses, but has not identified any as such yet, but it also wants to respond to an opportunity to provide community garden space and a prototype garden shelter as an accessory use. By rezoning the subject property into the campus, subject to these PD subarea regulations, that can be accomplished. The architect is here this evening, I believe, and can address with you the nature of the garden and maintenance supervision and future possible development. The submitted plan is complete for your review and upon approval of the subarea regulations, the initial development plan submitted and included in your information packet will become the final development plan for development of the site and for obtaining a building permit. Because the subject application reflects initial beneficial use to the community and future allowed uses in the subarea regulations are compatible transitions to the low-density residential neighborhood, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. We've had a number of calls from people who live on that block or further into the neighborhood, mostly for information, wondering what was going on because they knew the site was cleared and it was available for development. When we explained that the hospital campus would then be possible on that side of the street, people thought maybe it would be something that would happen into the future because it's really a small site as far as the hospital uses would be concerned. In order to accommodate onsite parking and so on, they would probably have to have more properties. So, that's the way the conversations went and specifically to the parking issue, onsite parking is not being provided for this particular site, but it is part of the campus parking plan. So, pedestrian access from the campus, the existing hospital campus is possible. As a community garden, on-street parking is also allowed. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Thank you. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Hi, I am Nate Vollmuth with Vera Health and this is a project we are working with, with Architecture for Humanity. They're the ones that did the prototype and this is a project that most of the materials has been donated and Vera's just working with them and providing a location for the shelter. They've actually are hoping to do it throughout the city at smaller sites include Falls Park and some elementary schools throughout town if this one goes well. We have addressed it at Vera McKinnon with our security and it will be part of their regular patrol. I know that was brought up as one of the issues. We did have a community meeting at the Prairie Center a few weeks ago that some of the community members came to and we addressed their concerns at that meeting, so.
Thank you, Nate. Any questions for Nate?
Nate, during your community meetings, that seemed to go pretty good. Do you think you satisfied your neighbors' issues or concerns?
Yeah, most of the questions brought up were, most of them were in regards to if we were going to expand the hospital to that area and a lot of questions were asked if we would be looking at purchasing other homes across the street. At this point, we, the administration doesn't have any plans to expand across Cliff Avenue just because of the costs incurred with doing that. So, yeah, after the meeting, there wasn't any questions or outstanding issues with the members of the community.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Nate? I guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address item 13?
I'm Donna Tompkins and my children own the property adjacent to this site. They have a couple apartments and an office in this area and then a parking lot. And I'm assuming that the people that are using the garden will not be using their parking lot and will this in any way change their zoning? Their zoning will still stay intact as it is?
Anything else, Donna?
No.
Okay. Any questions for Donna? Okay, let's see if we can get some answers for you. Steve, do you want to talk or address the zoning issue and if necessary, we can have Nate address the parking issue? Thank you.
I believe the property she's referring to is directly south of the subject property in its own C1 neighborhood, commercial. That's how the office users would come in and the parking lot is. As far as community garden parking is concerned, I did mention that it's public parking on the street for the general public. As far as hospital users, we have the campus parking plan, but that's enforced by the hospital. And so, I believe the hospital should address maintenance issues and enforcement of their parking policies.
If it becomes a problem?
If it becomes a problem. Well, even before that, it probably should be made known to anyone using the community garden what the parking policies are.
Steve, can you address her zoning issue?
Right, it's on C1 right now. The proposed zoning is not affecting the property to the south and would stay that way until the owner of the property would request a rezoning or participate in a rezoning application.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else that would like to address item number 13? Seeing none, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve item 13.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number 13 has been approved. Staff report, item 14.
Item 14 is a petition for rezoning. There is an addendum packet that was passed out prior to the meeting that was confirmed by the applicant and staff representatives as a recommendation for approval. And if we could go through that packet this evening, that would be the review process for this evening. Item 14 is a rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial and the RC Recreation Conservation to the I-1 and the RC. The reason it's worded that way is that the subject parcel, the owner of the subject parcel, the parcel is much greater than the site we're looking at and it's not platted. It's unplatted property, so it's very difficult to identify a legal description for the property that is being requested for rezoning. So, to cover our bases, we've got it in there as I-1 and RC, but we do have an exhibit and that was an exhibit that was provided to us in response to staff concern about just that situation where we're trying to identify just the property that's needed to accomplish the project that they proposed. The project that they're proposing is an addition of storage capacity to an existing I-1 Light Industrial operation, a cement plant, not a cement plant, but a cement translocation facility that outloads to rail and to trucks. The size of the site now is 4.7 acres by exhibit and it will be platted prior to obtaining a building permit. In the Light Industrial District and adjacent to the River Greenway Design Review District, we feel that we have enough, oh, and being located in the floodplain, we have enough constraint on the development of this property to allow the rezoning to go forward. The exhibit with zoning boundaries and dimensions is provided and the transfer and storage facility is shown in a plan as to where the storage capacity would be expanded. Landscaping, signage, lighting and trash plans have not been identified yet, but when they come in for a building permit, that will be done to make sure that we're meeting the requirements of the I-1 district. As far as drainage is concerned, significant redevelopment evaluation will be required for BMP requirements and a site plan is required for that evaluation. Staff feels that the expansion of the existing transloading facility and additional storage capacity is a reasonable request and staff is willing to support a rezoning of this limited amount of RC land to accommodate the project. Historically, we've tried to maintain the floodplain and the nature of the bike trail and the River Greenway at this location. We believe we can still accomplish that with the rezoning. The submitted plan is complete for your review and because the subject application appears to be only I-1 zoning needed for the proposed project, staff is recommending approval. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions of Steve? Okay, thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, Eric Willardson, Willardson Land Engineering, here tonight representing Sweetman Construction on this rezoning request to expand their transload facility for their fly ash and cement powder wholesale operation that exists on the site. It's taken off pretty good and they're just looking to expand. What we discovered when we went to expand this facility is the existing property that they're operating on, there's a slice of it that's not zoned correctly and I guess this is just an effort to encompass the entire area that they're operating in within the Light Industrial area and as Steve indicated, we will then plat the property so that there's a plat and a legal description on the parcel that they're going to operate and build structures on. The rezoning is a first step in expansion of the facility to construct storage silos on the facility for offload of rail cars and loading of trucks, delivery truck type. With that, I guess I'd answer any questions that you might have about the project or concerns that you might have in the rezoning.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions for Eric?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to address item 14? Seeing none, is there commission action?
I'll make motion for approval of item 14.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 14 has been approved. Staff report, item 15.
It's a revised report on exhibits and I handed that out prior to the meeting. If you would refer to that, please. Staff recommendation is for approval. The subject property is 67.9 acre site at the northeast corner of South Minnesota Avenue and West 85th Street. Quinn Ackerman Signature Companies is the applicant and the owner is represented by Francis Roman Springdale Development, LLC. The subject property has not been subdivided yet. We have a rezoning exhibit for the vacant ground or agricultural property that indicates the portions of that property that are reserved for commercial, office, multifamily and single-family attached and single-family detached, as well as RC conservation. You notice that the proposed west side corridor cuts through a corner of the property at the southeast corner of the property and then starts to head back west. When we, perhaps some of you remember the rezoning on this, all of that was taken into account with the developer of the subdivision to the north to provide suitable transitions which indicate in the zoning that you see on the screen in front of you, office at the northeast corner of the property, some RC conservation next to the office and over at the north, or excuse me, yeah, the northeast corner of the property, and then single-family residential against single-family residential. Those were the transitions that were worked out for that rezoning. We have an exhibit that's been provided by the applicant now just recently that shows how those transitions are being maintained, a little bit smaller quantities, and I'll go through that with you. The C4 commercial is proposed to increase by about an acre from 19.1 to 20.2. The office area is proposed to decrease from 11.4 to 3.8. The multifamily residential would increase from 7.0 to 19.6 at the center of the site. The RD residential, which is single-family attached, allowed, would increase from nine acres to 12.1 acres and the RS2, single-family detached, would decrease from 15.2 acres to 5.4 acres. The RC conservation does decrease somewhat from 6.2 to 4.4. The current land use is agricultural. The subdivision to the north is pretty much built out along the northern boundary of the property and so we have existing families that have close proximity. Site is rectangular in shape, slopes generally in a northeasterly manner and the highway corridor cuts through it. The rezoning exhibit we have in front of us with the graphic scale dimensioned has been provided with acreages and staff supports the transitions that are being proposed because they are similar to what we had approved previously. Traffic engineering indicates that the applicant should be aware of restricted access onto 85th Street and also on Minnesota Avenue. Access permits are required to be submitted to engineering with a subdivision plan. The applicant has provided us with a sketch plan which has been routed to engineering for review and comment. That's currently in process, so I don't have comments for you on the sketch concept plan for subdivision. Those would come to you in an application for preliminary subdivision plan approval as a planning commission and then it would go on to the city council for approval. For drainage, grading and drainage will be reviewed with that plan submitted and some portions of the area are within a regional BMP watershed. For these areas, BMP and detention will not be required. The southwest portion of the site will require BMP treatment and detention to a five-year and 100-year flood events. In comparing the two zoning districts, the office and open space conservation land use transitions from commercial to low-density residential at the northwest corner have been maintained in the new plan. The applicant is proposing to keep a low-density residential RS2 zoning to transition between apartment zoning and the existing RS1 zoning in the Grand Prairie addition to the north. The new zoning district is generally compatible with the existing adjacent districts. Traffic from higher intensity uses are directed away from low-intensity uses and building elements and scale in the future should be maintained and consistent with the proposed and existing development. Staff did advise the applicant to meet with property owners and they have done that and actually the plan that you have in front of you is in response to a lot of those comments as well as staff comments. So, the plan is complete. So, the plan is complete for your review, and because the subject application has provided for important land use transitions along the northern boundary of the property and a sketch subdivision plan has been submitted, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Staff has taken a number of calls from people in the neighborhood, as well as receiving letters in opposition to the project, and I believe some of those folks are here present this evening.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
My name is Clint Ackerman of Signature Companies, and I'm here to just let you know that I, you know, we're really excited about this project. We think it's a great fit for the corner, for the neighborhood. We've, like Steve had commented earlier, we've addressed, we believe, all the concerns with the transitions from property to the north into our property and kind of maintain the existing zonings in those areas. Other than that, I think it's going to be a great addition to Sioux Falls, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Clint?
Clint, was your reduction in commercial zoning by an acre, was that in response to what you heard from neighbors, or what transpired there?
The reduction in the commercial zoning was more so just by the change in the layout and the use of the remaining property, because we went to a little more RA1, we reduced some of the commercials, and we feel that the commercial with the 300-foot buffer around 85th and Minnesota is a better use of land in today's new development kind of layouts and the new city plan that we have before us.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Clint? I guess not, thank you. Are there audience members tonight that would like to address item 15?
Excuse me, my name is Dan Lemme. I am the developer of the Grand Prairie Estates and also the Grand Prairie, the Grand Prairie and then the Grand Prairie Estates, which is the development directly to the east of the proposed zoning request. One, to give you a little history of the Grand Prairie, we started this development, I think it was back in 2004, as a special neighborhood. And what I mean by that is a high-quality neighborhood. We put in boulevards, we put in a monument center in the front of that, we built a clubhouse, we did antique street lighting in that development for higher-end homes. And it was new to the city. We went to the planning board and worked with planning to get these amenities into this neighborhood to create a high-end housing development. And then also, we worked with the Holman family on the 80 that you're looking at now and how that would fit with the Grand Prairie neighborhood. In doing this, we felt that we had an overall plan that would work very well with our development, and we bought that ground from the Holman family. We did meet with Clint on the zoning request because he was requesting RD up against the Grand Prairie. We have RS1, and the current zoning is RS2 along that, which Clint is still keeping, but it's such a limited screening right there. We want to work with the applicant for rezoning, but we don't agree with totally what we've got here. We think we can work out a solution if we have time, so I guess, and then also with the Grand Prairie Estates, which is that private development of 40 acres right to the east, that development, if you notice, that is, that's very high-end stuff there. That's, you know, those are 12 lots on 40 acres, that's a private street gated community, and it currently is zoned with commercial connecting to that property. Now, we burned that property and planted a lot of trees in there to try to screen that off, but we didn't plan on a larger amount of commercial in there. So, at this time, what we would ask is for a disapproval or a non-recommendation of this property, and, but we are willing to work with the developer to come up with a, what we feel would be a better transition, something that gives us a little more border. A lot of those homes in the Grand Prairie are well over a million dollars, so we would like to just have a little consideration on further buffering on that south part of our property there.
Any other questions for Dan?
Dan, you knew when you put the Grand Prairie in that 85th was a major collector?
Yes, that's why we designed it that way.
Okay. And that naturally, commercial is what follows along those two?
That's why we designed it that way.
Okay. And South Dakota Highway 100 is going to run right through there?
That's why we designed it that way also, is that, you know, we did burning. We also, like I say, worked with the Holman family on how you would adapt the zoning along South Dakota 100 there. South Dakota 100 goes through our property to the east also, same way, is that this was a highly thought-out and designed development of this whole quarter, or actually, more than that, it's almost that half section. So, what we're asking is simply consideration for the people who expended a lot of money in the Grand Prairie to build homes. It's also my reputation as trying to sell properties like that and represent my customers as well as I can of what I understand the property to the south would be zoned at. And we know that 85th Street's a major street, Minnesota is also, and South Dakota 100. That's why we fully understand that commercial will be down in that corner. We just need a, hopefully, we can maintain the RS2 zoning that we had originally agreed upon.
Any other questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address item number 15? Please come forward.
My name is Rizan Hajal. I live in the Grand Prairie, and I own the business across the street from it also. And that street is not your average commercial like what 85th Street would bring in. There's already Sioux Sport on the southeast corner of 85th Street, which is a little bit subdued commercial, but if you think about it, going down from 69th Street to 85th Street, it is, there are a lot of empty lots, and those are zoned for office only, not for commercial use. And this, the developer has shown very much insensitivity to the neighborhood by asking for a little bit increase in the commercial zoning up towards those lots, that actually, some of them are not even developed, which would change the whole feel of the neighborhood. In addition, the same goes for shortening the amount of space for a single detached family homes, which is, the only point of it is to just change the feel of the neighborhood and not continue with the same development. Although 85th Street is a major artery, and there are some commercial developments expectedly on the corner, you can compare that to 69th and Minnesota corner, which maintained the feel of the neighborhood with commercial real estate. So, the developer has shown a lot of insensitivity to what the neighborhood is designed to be, and maybe there was a transition already, which was a little bit more shorter, and not approving this project will maintain the feel of the neighborhood.
Okay. How do you spell your first name?
Yes.
Are there any questions for Rizan? I guess not, thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address this issue? Would you come forward, please?
Oh, my name's Aaron Mently. We live at 102 West Honors. We're the first house in the Grand Prairie, so we've been there about six years now. We built our house for very specific reasons where we did. We built it because it was a low-density area, it was a planned community. The neighborhood has some very specific things that make it planned. One of those is we have a community area. The community area has a pool, it has a tennis court, it has a park. These are very specific resources for children. It is on the west side of 77th, and all of the kids are on the east side of 77th. So, if you've never been to this neighborhood, you cannot understand how this operates. Kids are going across 77th all the time. Now, when we built there, it was very much supposed to be a family area, and some of the, some of the people have already expressed this, but these are large lots. They are, the reason I mention that is because it is something that we wanted the area to not have too much traffic. I've heard a couple times now that the transitions have been retained. They're not at all retained. They're completely gone. So, what that does is it increases traffic, and that traffic, which comes through the neighborhood, goes through 77th. This is the bisector of the resources and the kids. So, I feel like this has already been approved, and I think that the discussion on this is almost nonexistent. This is not something that should be changed. Everything the developer wants to do is already zoned for further south. It makes perfect sense the way it is now. When you remove those transitions, that just goes away. It just seems that it was properly planned to begin with, and just going to throw that out.
I'm not sure it's happened yet.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
But, did you have anything else, Aaron?
No, thank you.
Are there any questions for Aaron? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to address item number 15 that have, that would have new, Brad, do you want to come up? Looking for new and different testimony, we've heard quite a bit of the same discussion so far.
Good evening. My name is Brad Ruby. I live in the Grand Prairie Estates, and it's that development to the east of this, and there's not a lot of changes right up to that. But we looked into this land for a couple years. It's, right now, there's going to be 11 homes on 40 acres. Only reason we bought this property is because of the low density and the quality of the houses and the community around there. And changing this, we know 85th is going to have lots of traffic, we know Highway 100 is going to have a lot of traffic, but when we bought this land, we knew that that was seven years, 10 years, 12 years down the road before any of that's even going to get paved or being used. And over that time, there would be berms built and trees built and all of that. Switching this and increasing the commercial property right next to that, that could be built next year when there is no berms, when there is no trees, and there's 10x, 10 empty lots there that people aren't going to buy because the first thing they see is a big commercial area. They see big multifamily, they see, I don't know the R2 and the R4 exactly, but the other people have kind of explained that to me, and that's not what we had in mind when we bought that property, and certainly would not do anything to help maintain that property value and sell the remaining lots around there. I'm thinking lots further, like Aaron said, would be, there's plenty of opportunities to put that kind of housing in there, and 10 years down the road, when 85th is paved and when Highway 100 is in, a lot of these things that Dan Lemme had talked about, when we developed this property and bought this property, would in place that there would be a lot more natural buffers in that area. I know a lot of the people from Grand Prairie Estates that have the lots are here, I know there's a lot of people from Grand Prairie that's here, and if anybody just wants to stand up and show all the people that are not interested in this, I mean, there's a lot of landowners out there, it's not just a couple, so. And these are the people that live out there and the people that own all those lots to the east. That's it. Any questions?
I was wondering why everyone was sticking around. Usually isn't the riveting testimony a commission, so. Any questions for Brad?
Thank you.
Okay, is there any, one more person if you'd like, has, Eric, do you want to come up? One more person, and...
I'm Eric Severson, and I'm a resident at 301 East Shadow Creek. And my lot doesn't border any of the changes, but I guess what I do want to point out is that the lots that do border the changes are not sold, and so I think what I can see happening is that we make these changes, those lots probably are not going to sell, and then that border becomes moving into my neighborhood where all of a sudden we have vacant lots that, and I think as both Dan and Brad mentioned, it is going to change the dynamics of the neighborhood. So, I would hope that, you know, you can't see it from that graph, and you would think maybe that there's houses already there, but there's not houses there, and I think that needs to be noted, too.
Okay, any questions for Eric?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important that everyone understand, maybe you do, that this is a rezoning where we're being asked to shuffle zoning amounts of property that are zoned currently to a different number of acres zoned using the same zoning. So, regardless of what happens here, if it stays the same, I think you would be advised to finalize yourself with the way it's currently zoned as well. But with that, is there a commission action on item 15?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask another question.
Sure.
Steve. Steve, the staff report that was presented to us prior to this addendum tonight is somewhat confusing to me. It says staff recommendation is for approval, yet over on the third page of the report, it says staff recommends deferral of the rezoning. I assume that that recommendation for deferral was prior to receiving this this evening?
That's correct.
In view of the fact that we have these individuals here, with the concerns that they have, I don't see any objection to deferring, so we can kind of work the case out.
Chair, you have, you can approve, defer, deny.
Knowing what you've witnessed here tonight, have you changed your opinion as a professional staff person of approval?
I'm confident what Mr. Lemme said, that there's a possibility to work things out if given more time.
Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what I think we need to do tonight, is give this issue more time.
Do you have a motion?
I would move that we defer this till the April force by commission meeting.
Okay. You need to come to the podium.
First of all, I'd like to address the deferral item that was on the agenda. There were certain things that went on the planning department that were given to the planning department, and there was just some miscommunication, and I guess I wasn't understanding that the deferral came from that miscommunication and not necessarily from the fact that some of the neighboring residents opposed this project. Furthermore, I'd like to address the comments from Dan Lemme. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and in the beginning, I was proposing to do some RD along the southern border of the Grand Prairie Estates and what he notates up there, and then also, we wanted to have C4 commercial all the way up to 85th Street because it's our main arterial street, and that's just a natural location for that. After the meeting, and I told the residents I'd give it some consideration, and I guess I felt that my concessions were to leave the property on the north side as RS2 as a concession, that was, you know, generally agreed upon, and then leaving office in there. So, we're not changing the zoning regulations on the northern property of that. Furthermore, I'd like to address a couple of different items that were brought forth this evening. One of them is, you know, one person, you know, talked about their community and have their own clubhouse, pool, and park area. We have the same thing in here. The planned development is a mixed-use development. It has commercial, retail along the outside perimeter, moving into multifamily, which there's going to be a clubhouse that will be shared between the multifamily, the RD, and the RS2. And we're going to have our own recreational area, as well as having some additional recreational area along the east side, which is along South Dakota Future 100. We've got plenty of things planned in this development, and I don't feel that, also, I don't feel that there's going to be any, you know, additional traffic than a normal development would bring to their development. Whether we left it the way it was before, we did this one here, the additional traffic is going to go out to Minnesota at the quickest route, which will be a main collector street within the development. I understand their concerns. You know, anytime you have a different development in the neighborhood, it's changed, or anytime there's a rezoning, there's change, and nobody likes that. That's a valid point. But I will just bring out the fact that this is a separate development. This is not a part of Grand Prairie. And anytime one developer such as myself comes to look at the property and wants to change the zoning, as long as we abide by the city's ordinances and the city's regulations, you know, there shouldn't be a lot of holdup as far as, you know, my standpoint as far as a developer, I'm hoping. So I just, I hope you take that into consideration and also, you know, move forward in voting on this, because I felt that we did the necessary things we needed to do. If there's additional buffering that we need to do with the RS-two on the property to the north, which, you know, we will in time apply for a conditional use permit for twin homes, that, to me, is to be addressed at that time, not at this meeting, because this is strictly zoning. And again, we are abiding by the city's rezoning practices, doing a transitional buffer from the RS-two, RS-two to RD, RA-one to commercial, and also buffering the office. And if I may, I would like Raquel to also come up and speak on behalf of Lloyd Companies because they're helping with this project as well.
We've actually stopped taking testimony a while back.
I was just going to point out, I made a motion, it may die, because I haven't heard the second yet, but I think that order of business should be taken care of first.
Yeah, we have to do that. Appreciate the fact that you responded. What we don't have here tonight is anything for us to judge the future of the development other than a zoning map. I don't know, we don't know what you shared with the neighbors in terms of these plans, but right now, we're just talking about dirt and how much of it's going to be C-four, how much would be RS-two, and so forth. And so am I correct, we have a motion, are we correct in assuming deferral is off the table as far as you're concerned?
As far as I'm concerned, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to state is we're trying to create a new development that abides by the zoning. So I, I mean, to me, that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Any motion was for deferral?
For deferral to April fourth.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? That motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion related to item fifteen?
I will make a motion to approve the rezone of item number fifteen.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, clearly, it's a sensitive issue for the neighbors and, and I believe for Mr. Ackerman as well. I do believe, as you said, Meredith, we are still talking about just dirt at this point, and there's time for both developers to get together to put the needed buffers in on the northern part of the rezone and the southern part of the existing Grand Prairie. I know people don't like gas stations in their neighborhoods, but the fact of the matter is that we need them. And if you look at the zoning throughout the city of Sioux Falls, you will see that that is the type of zoning that goes in at the corner of two major collector streets. And I don't believe that this zoning was a foregone conclusion this evening, but, and I am very familiar with this neighborhood, the layout, I've watched it go up. I know several people that live in the Grand Prairie. It is indeed a beautiful neighborhood, but I don't think we can assume that what Mr. Ackerman is going to do is, is not beautiful. And it's, you're going to have some traffic out there. Clearly, with Eighty-Fifth Street, Minnesota Avenue, and Highway One Hundred, there's going to be some traffic there. And I think there have been some concessions made. I, I think that there is still a lot of flexibility within what is done here. So I just encourage all the parties to be open, because this is just the first step. As Mr. Ackerman said, he'll be back for some conditional use permits, and so there'll be lots of opportunity. But again, we're just doing some rezoning, like you said, shifting the amount of dirt of one to the other. So in that pretext, I support the rezone.
And are there any more discussion related to fifteen? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
opposed?
Yes.
It passes. David, is this where we move nineteen?
I'll give it a second. Typically, item nineteen is actually on your regular agenda because of a technological glitch. This is the type of application that you normally see on the consent agenda. I'll go through it fairly quickly and then answer any questions if there are any. What the request is, is for a final development plan and a minor amendment in subarea C of the Whisper Ridge Plan Development District to construct one hundred and sixteen residential units and twelve buildings and reduce the rear setbacks from twenty-five feet to thirteen feet on fourplex, fiveplex, and sixplex buildings. The applicant's requesting approval in order to begin construction on the development. The area in question is about eleven and a half acres in size, and as I noted, the zoning is within subarea C of the Whisper Ridge Plan Development District. The Whisper Ridge PD was created in two thousand and five to develop a variety of residential housing options. The subject property has already been approved for a final development plan in May of two thousand and eight to develop a series of eight-unit residential buildings, many of which have already been constructed closer to Southeastern Avenue. This application represents an amended final development plan along with a minor amendment to reduce some of the rear yard setbacks. The subject application represents a reduction in the density over what had been previously approved from one hundred and thirty units to one hundred and sixteen. Because the subject application meets the intent of the subarea regulations and is a compatible land use to adjacent properties, many of which have been already developed by the developer, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan and minor amendment with the following condition, that the plans approved are as submitted, any changes to final design or layout will be required to be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Substantial changes may require planning commission approval. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David? Yes, no? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here tonight?
My name is Brian Gruus, and I'm here representing Envision Companies who is requesting the change. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions for Brian? I guess not. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would care to address item number nineteen? Seeing none, all those in favor, excuse me. Is there a motion for item nineteen?
Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation approval of item nineteen with the one stipulation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item nineteen is approved. Who's the petitioner? Is it you, Brent?
I'm not the petitioner, but I'm the presenter.
You're the presenter. Are you doing sixteen and seventeen together?
Yes.
We'll vote separately?
Yes. Good evening, Brent O'Neil. It's good to be with you, and I was going to say that, but that's clarified from the start, so thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about a proposed tax increment financing district that we are recommending approval moving forward, both through the planning commission tonight as well as a final approval by the city council later this month. Tax increment financing is an economic development tool that the city uses, and it's a fairly common practice to support projects of significance. And we have one here that we want to discuss in a little bit more detail. We're going to start by a description of the property that would be included in the TIF district. This is west of the airport at Westport Avenue and Benson Road. It includes the area that now houses the city's football fields, as well as will be the future home of the Sanford Sports Complex. If we could go to the next slide, Steve. This TIF district really is a public-private partnership between the city of Sioux Falls and several partners, including Sanford Health Systems. The centerpiece of the private development is the Sanford Pentagon Basketball Complex. There are other sporting complexes proposed for this area, as well as private development such as hotels, restaurants, et cetera. The public side is related to the city's football fields, potential soccer use, et cetera, in that area. We also note that the hockey facility that has been discussed recently, as well as the tennis facility, would be in this district.
Next slide, please, Steve.
This is just a highlight of the existing football fields that are scheduled to open soon. And then on the top, you'll see a few more that are proposed for future development, and they're addressed in our TIF plan. Again, this is just a little bit more detailed layout of the project as a whole. Some of it is fairly concrete, some of it is more tentative and preliminary. Again, you'll see the city's football fields to the right, the Sanford Pentagon Complex in the middle, the ice and tennis facilities to the north, and then the southwest quadrant really being that private development that is really going to be a generator in this TIF district. This last slide really addresses two elements, the project side and the revenues generated, and then the reimbursable expenses that we're proposing to use the TIF district for. Right now, we have a current assessed value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At the end of the project completion, we expect the assessed value to be over twenty-eight million dollars, which is substantial. Over the life of the TIF district, that will amount to about nine and a half million dollars that can go back into the project as an investment. And then one other point we wanted to mention, just, the twenty-eight million is significant in itself, but it's actually fifty-eight million dollars in bona fide construction costs that are going into this project between the private development, the public development. The second half of this slide talks about those expenses that we've listed within the TIF plan as being eligible for reimbursement. They're fairly self-explanatory, so I won't read them, but it is significantly tied to the infrastructure needed to support this development, as well as the facilities that are going to be used for the regional, city, and tourism uses. With that, I wanted to be fairly brief. We do have the development team here, we do have other members of our staff, and any of us will be able to answer any questions the commission has.
Okay. Thanks, Brent. Any questions for Brent relative to item sixteen and seventeen?
Length of time on the TIF, Brent?
It's twenty years, Brent.
It is twenty years. It's the maximum allowed by statute. I would also point out that in many cases, our TIF districts have not lasted twenty years just because of a conservative approach on our projections. We oftentimes have satisfied the obligations of the TIF in less than twenty years.
Also, your report says that there's five active TIF districts. Are there some that have been, you're listing seven. Are there some that have been deactivated out of that seven ones, Ed?
Well, this would be number fifteen, and there have been some deactivated. There are, it might have been a typo on our part. I believe seven is the accurate number.
All right.
Any other questions for Brent? Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Other members of the audience this evening that would like to address items sixteen or seventeen?
Thank you. My name is Bill Towns, and I'm here representing the community indoor tennis facility that is being proposed at the Sanford Youth Site. And I'm here in support of the TIF district. We, as a tennis community, are excited about the opportunity to be able to create an indoor facility for the kids. Sioux Falls Tennis Association is also in partnership with the city and runs all their lessons for the little kids and adult leagues, and this would enable us to use that year round, as also promoting tournaments and people from the outside. Our high schools for state tournaments, our colleges would use this facility. So this is, this is really exciting for our organization. We think it'll have an excellent economic impact on the city as well. We currently have about three thousand participants in our programs right now in just the summer programs, and we, we see this as a, as a big advantage. So I'm just here on behalf of the tennis community in support of the, the TIF district.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Bill? Thank you.
Thank you.
I see we have some ICE people here tonight. Would you like to visit the podium, Joe?
Thank you. My name's Joe Zuder. I'm here representing the ICE Sports Association. We're the Five Oh One C-three nonprofit that was formed to take the lead on developing a new multi-sheet indoor ICE facility to replace the two sheets we have today. Much like Bill said, you know, the situation is that we've got a couple of aging facilities, a couple of facilities that aren't available during the full course of the season, and we've made some, I think, some real inroads trying to develop some, some equity for our project and do our part to be kind of the north anchor tenant in this great vision that Sanford has. A lot of the same messages. We think right now Sioux Falls is kind of off the map as a destination for ICE-related activities during the, during the season and really throughout the year. This facility would give us a chance with its location, its proximity to the rest of the amenities, to, to put ourselves back on the map and be the destination our community is in a lot of ways for activities outside ICE sports. So we're doing what we can to raise money for what's estimated to a seven and a half to eight million dollar facility, and the type of reimbursement we could get in, in doing our part of this march to turn kind of this cornfield into a part of an economic development engine for the city, getting some relief and reimbursement for some of the infrastructure, the roads, the parking, and those types of things that go above and beyond just what is fundamentally a fairly expensive facility to build by the nature of it would be very helpful, and we would ask for your, your consideration and approval of the, of the TIF, the TIF district.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Items sixteen and seventeen. Seeing none, we will act on item sixteen first, which is the district boundary. And I would entertain a motion for item sixteen.
I'll make a motion to support the creation of the boundaries for tax increment financing district fifteen.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of agenda item sixteen signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Item sixteen is approved. Item seventeen would be the TIF plan. Item 17 would be the TIF plan. Is there a motion related to item 17? Mr. Chairman, for approval. We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of item 17 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Items 16 and 17 have been approved. Thank you. Who's doing item 18? Is that you, David? You're all welcome to stick around for the last item tonight.
All right. Good evening again. Just wanted to present to the Planning Commission as an informational item, the Sustainability Master Plan and its development over the last year and a half. To get specifically into the background and the purposes of the creation of the Sustainability Master Plan, and then some of the initiatives from the council and the mayor's office on that, I defer that for later in the presentation to Amy Ladonsky. But what I wanted to do first, to highlight some of the contextual issues under which we're working when we develop these types of plans, specifically related to the Shaped Sioux Falls 2035 Plan, which you've approved three years ago. If you could go to the next slide, Steve. Some of the considerations, in the presentation overview, this is how we'll kind of go through it, but, next one. Some of the considerations that we looked at under the Shaped Sioux Falls Plan, and I'm highlighting just specifically the most relevant portions of the comprehensive plan and what we did with, how we considered that in the creation of the Sustainability Master Plan. The first item is the growth areas. You all are fairly familiar with this map. What you look at is the urbanized area that's already been developed, annexed, and serviced. The next tier is the planned urbanized area, which is the blue, orange, and green areas on your map, on the map that's shown, which would be Tier One is within the five-year ability of the city to service. Tier Two is five to 15 years out, and then Tier Three is 16 to 25-year. The point that I'm making with this map is that the considerations that we use is, when we look at what we can service and how we do those, is that we go through a phasing process. You can see that the growth is adjacent and concentric around the city, and that with the goal of preventing leapfrog and sprawling development. Some of the other issues that we consider when we do that are the ability to construct and provide public facilities and services, and then the infrastructure related, such as roads, sewer, and water. On the next slide, that is primarily on the outskirts, what I just spoke about was primarily on the outskirts, but another major component of what our office, the Community Development Office, and other departments within the city work on are neighborhood conservation initiatives. What we look at when we're talking about neighborhood conservation, and you may remember that a couple of years ago, we presented a neighborhood plan, the Pettigrew Heights Neighborhood, to you, which was, which ultimately was approved by both this body and the City Council. When we look at neighborhood conservation, we look at land use and zoning, the character of the neighborhood, quality of life, public involvement, housing, property maintenance, economic development, and redevelopment and infill, and making sure that when we're talking about redevelopment and infill initiatives, that we provide the mechanisms and the tools necessary to provide those opportunities for both the community and the development community, to make sure that those things can be done without an onerous and burdensome process. That's central to our goal on preserving these central district neighborhoods. You've seen items tonight related to Pettigrew Heights on the apartments and the Gigglebees redevelopment, and these are all types of things that we look at. On the next plan, what you think of maybe a little bit more primarily when you think about sustainability is the Environmental Stewardship Plan, which is Chapter Nine on the shaped resources. It's evaluation of current assets, such as steep slopes, wetlands, rivers and floodplains, threatening endangered species, soils, cultural and archaeological resources, urban forests, and open space. And then on the next slide, the conservation strategies that Shaped Sioux Falls has developed would be cleanliness, pollution prevention, resource conservation, greening, alternative transportation, alternative energy, land, and green buildings. All of these things have been looked at and hopefully addressed by elements of the Sustainability Master Plan. And to give you some more background on that, I'd like to introduce to you, if you don't already know, Amy Ladonsky is with the Public Works Department, and she can tell you a little bit more about that background.
Good evening. As Dave stated, Amy Ladonsky, Sustainability Coordinator for the City of Sioux Falls. I'd like to thank Mr. Loveland for the opportunity to speak this evening, and the Planning Department's participation in this planning process for us. Also, thanks so much. I know the evening's getting late, so appreciate your attention to this matter. As far as sustainability is concerned, I often like to start with a definition, because it has so many different definitions, but from a municipality's perspective, really sustainability is simply trying to meet the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. You practice this every time you meet, I understand. So there are many city departments that have an awful lot of really solid sustainability programs, but what we don't have as a city is one overarching framework against which we can measure our progress. And that's the ultimate goal of this plan. It's a grant-funded plan, so we're fortunate in that regard. We also, we hired a consultant called SAIC. We involved internal and external stakeholders during this process, so it's very much a local plan. Here you can see the key plan elements. We gathered to develop our mission, our key focus areas as a city, our goals, our programs, and then that consultant also assisted us by providing some key supporting analyses. We have a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, a citywide inventory. The baseline year that we measured was 2008, because in 2009, 10, and 11, we had some considerable energy initiatives here in the city. And we have some really great conservation efforts that we hope to build upon. We wanted to be able to see in future years what kind of progress we've made since 2008. Also, a solid waste and recycling assessment. That assessment has recently gotten some press, if you've been reading the Argus. And our consultant provided a business case analysis of all those focus areas. Next slide, Dave, please. This essentially is an illustration of the process that we followed, and it's common in many master plan processes, but it represents the steering and implementation team, which is our internal team, and the core sustainability team, our external team. We nearly had a representative from every single city department. We hosted all-day workshops along with our consultant to be able to shape those goals and those implementation plans. We also invited members of the public to apply to be part of our external partner team. So we had external partner, experts from the energy industry, solid waste and recycling industry, small business, large business, education, nonprofits. We really wanted to make sure that we had good representation throughout the community, helping us shape this plan, and we feel that we met that goal. I also wanted to be sure to note that this effort is not in any way attempting to replace the 2035 Plan. We're very proud of the work that you did with the 2035 Plan. We're hoping to recognize that plan and supplement that plan where it's appropriate. And thus, we had Dave Loveland's wonderful participation throughout the process, which we appreciate very much. Next slide, Dave. Simple mission here. Working together, we will promote a vibrant community through the innovative and wise use of our resources. Important to note that as the team was shaping this mission statement, we were talking about resources. We're not just talking about natural resources. We're talking about our economic resources and our social capital and knowledge to build upon. We want to make sure that we have good progress in each of those three pillars, those three areas of sustainability, if we are going to be a vibrant community that we hope to continue to be. These are focus area definitions. I apologize for the size of the slide. There's another small one coming up as well. And there are six key focus areas within the plan. If you wish to research each of those focus areas a little bit more, you can go to sioufals.org/green. But there are four focus areas that Dave Loveland, in a moment, will be speaking more thoroughly on. Water Resources is one of those. So the overarching goal for Water Resources is to wisely manage local and regional water, wastewater, and stormwater to create a high-quality, sustainable system. Transportation, provide an efficient, multimodal, and cost-effective transportation system that offers increasingly clean measures for all users. Built-in natural environment, promote sustainable land use and development to manage growth while conserving the environment and natural resources. And community vitality, promote health and wellness by encouraging business, government agencies, nonprofits, and individuals to improve the community's triple bottom line. And that triple bottom line refers to the economic, social, and environmental resources that I noted a little bit earlier. Finally, after meeting with our internal, external partners, hosting a large number of workshops, our consultant had our teams evaluate our existing programs that we already have here in the City of Sioux Falls, evaluated potential new programs that would help us meet those goals. They wrapped it all up and performed a business case analysis using what they call an optimity model, and they prioritized sets of programs and goals for us. Here on the next slide, the other small slide I warned you about, is the summary implementation plan. This in no way characterizes the plan in its entirety. It's really just a snapshot to show you some of the timelines associated with those bigger-picture items that we're hoping to accomplish. For example, under ongoing activities, consider revising zoning ordinances to incorporate sustainable design standards. And that's something that in a moment, Dave is going to be speaking to more fully. In the spirit of transparency and accountability, we intend to have an online dashboard that Planning Commission and the public alike can follow our progress. We will certainly be updating this dashboard annually, so a year from now, you'll be able to see what kind of progress we made on those goals that are outlined in the Sustainability Master Plan. But my hope secretly is to ensure that we update that much more frequently. Water Resources. So Dave will be, as I mentioned, he'll be focusing on several key areas here, and he'll pull out just a couple of goals that we want to make sure that you fully understand, and this is our final opportunity to accept public comment this week. We want your comment. Our consultant next week is going to be synthesizing all of the information we've gathered over the last year and a half. So if you have any concerns with these goals that are outlined that Dave will be speaking on, we'd love your input. So thank you for your time.
All right. Wanted to highlight specific focus areas that are related to your work and what your mission is as members of the Planning Commission. And then I've highlighted the specific goals then related to that in red here on these following slides. So the one that I wanted to highlight underwater Resources was, one of the goals is to evaluate the city's subdivision ordinance by 2017 for consideration of low-impact development. Low-impact development would include things such as reducing curb, gutter, using more bioswales, maybe reducing the size of the street. And that's what, what we're not doing is mandating that that occur. What we are doing is considering the possibility of inclusion of that into some standards. But that has to go through a vetting process, through the Planning Commission, through public hearings, through the Infrastructure Review and Advisory Board. So there will be multiple steps that will need to be undertaken, but this is one component of what we would be looking at. Under the transportation, under the next slide, the one that I wanted to highlight for you was measure walk score and bike score of city core area and set goals from this value. Now what we're talking about with things like that are, what is the ability of a pedestrian or bicyclist to access the needed services without using a vehicle to transport? Do they have that ability? Is it something that they can do? I mean, we're noting that in the staff reports occasionally, if they're within a certain distance of a bike trail or transit route, you know, certain things like that. I apologize for the feedback. I'm not sure where that's coming from. But anyway, so when we talk about walk score and bike score, those are actual scores that you can develop using some online tools, and then evaluate that based upon how we would move forward then with consideration. And that's not something that's certainly set in stone or as a timeframe at this moment, but it could be considered more from a pedestrian orientation standpoint, as we look at the size and scale of developments, and then how do we make sure that pedestrian access, you've seen conditions that have required pedestrian access on plans before. On the next slide is something that is a little bit more specific, directly targeted toward what you do. This is the built-in natural environment. One of the goals is to continue to update and modernize the city's zoning ordinance by 2013 to promote flexibility and incorporate alternative development practices. Now what we talked about in the past, when we talked about Shaped Sioux Falls, and when we've given you updates on where we are with the zoning ordinance, it's not a mandate, it's not a replacement of the types of development that we see right now, but what it is, is the possibility of including standards and zoning definitions that would allow different styles of development. You know, things that would allow for higher densities, more walkability, and then access to alleyways and reorientation of some of the traditional type of neighborhoods. The next one would be to, actually, it would be more of a consolidation, not necessarily development, but a consolidation of an open-space plans and policies. There's multiple different plans and policies throughout city departments, depending on their focus. Parks obviously has their master plan. Public Works has their drainage plans and their open-space plans on how they manage. So one of the things that we've thought about is that maybe we would look at consolidating all of those plans to ensure that there's consistency across all of that, from department to department. And then the next one that we wanted to talk about was to update and modernize city engineering design standards by 2015 to promote low-impact development and smart growth techniques. Now what that would include would be the things like we talked about low-impact development, utilizing more bioswales, you know, and reducing then the BMP requirements. I mean, these are all things that are, have a lot of review to go through and see where we, where and if they're appropriate for the city to consider. But that's why we wanted to make it one of the goals, is that we want to evaluate whether these are appropriate and whether they're achievable. And so, and given the context under which we work, you know, proposals going through the subdivision ordinance, through the Infrastructure Review and Advisory Board, ultimately to Planning Commission, and then for final approval at City Council, a lot of these things have a lot of things to consider when we do these. But this sustainability plan, as a component of the Shaped Sioux Falls Plan, will give us some framework and direction in how we would move that forward. So, and the last slide is the community vitality section. And so what we would look at with that would be the modification, potential modification of the city's capital improvement program evaluation to include environmental and social considerations in addition to just economic criteria. Those things are a little bit harder to quantify, and so one of the things that we need to do is evaluate what is the appropriateness of some of the considerations, and then how do we achieve it? And so, again, there's multiple boards, multiple policies that would have to be considered and reviewed, but again, this also gives us kind of the framework and the ability to consider some of these initiatives. So those are the specific things that we wanted to highlight for you as the Planning Commission and your role as land use body. If there's further questions, as Amy noted, a lot of this is available on the city's website under sioufals.org/green. And I think it's green, is that right? Yep. And then, and then certainly we're available to take calls. On the next slide, you'll see our contact information, the consultant, Amy, and myself. We can certainly answer any questions then as well. So that concludes our presentation. We can certainly take any questions from you. But this was an informational conversation that we wanted to bring to your attention as the city's land use body, so.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Amy. Any questions of Amy or David?
What's the big takeaway here? What do you think that really, that the residents in the City of Sioux Falls will see that will reach out and maybe change what it is that they do see, how they live, work, and participate in a sustainable community? What's the, what are your top three?
Top three? Well, I think I could answer that, and then I'll let Amy address it, too. I think what we're looking, what we're primarily looking to do is to, I think Amy hit it too in her earlier conversation about that the city does a lot of things already, a lot of initiatives for sustainable practices and development. What we'd like to do is consolidate those into a document that demonstrates to the community the things that their city government does, and then the things that we're trying to provide as opportunities for them to consider as well. So when we talk about what are we looking for, we're looking for the potential reduction of waste, we're looking for more walkable communities, more sustainable practices in development. And then I guess I'd let Amy answer anything else that she'd like to include into that, too.
We'd like to invite Dave to be part of the sustainability program. That was a great answer. Unfortunately, we don't have a top three. We have a top six. We have six key focus areas. And as I stated earlier, and as Dave stated, you know, there are many municipalities throughout the country that are embarking on sustainability master plans or something similar more and more frequently as time goes on, and it's for that very reason that we need measurable guidelines against which we can measure our progress. very reason that we need measurable guidelines against which we can measure our progress in many of these areas. You know, disjointed reports from each of our departments, they're great, but we have many folks that are moving into this community, that already live in this community, that are constantly contacting our environmental division offices that want to know, what are we doing to go green? And there's not one answer that I can give them because there are so many programs that are currently being run, and this will help us develop a really good, consistent message and an online dashboard that the community can then say, okay, gosh, they are a vibrant community that uses their resources wisely. That's our goal.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amy or David? We have a small audience left. Did you have any questions of Amy or David? Thank you. David, did you want us to vote an acceptance of your report?
No, this is, this was just an informational, we didn't need action from you, so we wanted...
So, we can move to the item called adjournment?
Yes, you can.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you.